Start, I need to call the carbon city council meetings orders. First thing on the agenda will be the review discussion of the meeting minutes from October sixth, twenty twenty five. Chad and Cheryl are reviewing it.
The what?
The meeting minutes of October sixth. I think you guys are reviewing it.
I just heard him say my name.
Oh, I think he said you're reviewing it.
No, I'm doing.
Okay. Anybody have anything? Correct. Need some of the motion.
Make motion that we accept the minutes from October sixth, council meeting.
Speech made in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Next, the, oh, little section. Anybody in the audience that is not in the minute or the agenda that has anything?
Uh, John and Dylan. Oh, wait, one permit for a, wrap this line up, the new subdivision. Check it, it's good to go. Question.
Yeah.
On the drawing, on what would be the north side of the property, it looks like he's got it drawn straight to the property line. So he's dividing, the fence will be on his property, dividing his and the neighbors. Is there anybody in that house yet? Is this the great, uh, the dark gray house? Two of two, yeah. And then on the south side, that's where the corner house will be, and nothing's there yet.
Yeah. Any concerns with that?
I did not.
Since there's nothing on the south, are there property markers?
Yeah, they had them flagged for a while.
Okay.
He had, he had a pretty good reference where it was from the overhead view as well. I don't know, I think I told him to talk to the neighbor if he had one for. I actually did with two of them first time I talked about it. But if it's on the property line, that should be fine. Especially if you can talk to the neighbors and they have any questions, they'll probably find this. So I can have, I can have a delegate if you want, but to be honest, I don't have very much luck finding any property on this.
Well, that was my question was, did they pin these from the survey?
If they did, I could find it.
I just figured since there was new property out there, that's kind of what I thought too, but I, I have not made the point.
Did they pay the fee?
Yes.
None? Make motion to approve fence permit for two of two Clay Avenue. Motion made second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Next, the park.
Yeah, the park tonight.
Alright.
Um, you should have maybe in your packet minutes for the meeting, oh yes, the C and G control room. We did. I was just basically coming to see if you have any questions about them. They want me to answer. And then I wanted to see if anyone remembers about park benches.
Thank you.
I thought we approved park benches with the lighting during the dog park era. But I can't find it in the minute.
We, I, I think we just approved four of the dog park. I don't think we approved anything going around.
Cause I thought we had there, the exercise equipment, or?
No, that, we tabled the exercise equipment, but I thought lighting and benches were gonna go all the way around. But there, just FYI, there are no minutes for the November twenty twenty four meeting on my website. I don't know if it happened during that, cause I can't pull those up, but I don't know, I, I just, I know we've talked about it most of the time.
Yeah. I don't think we approved anything for it.
Okay. So I don't know what you wanna do now.
We get the time, we also didn't know how many things in that night it's gonna have.
True.
All that stuff, so. I don't, I, I remember approving some stuff to go to the dog park.
Right.
Lighting, visiting, that's all.
Right.
Just ask, it's already pretty recent, right?
November eighteen, Josh can vintage light fixtures and exercise equipment were mentioned. There wasn't any option on anything.
So we mentioned that we did make a decision on it.
Yeah.
I don't think it was, stuff went to the dog park, ended up being donated by others.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember I only bought a couple of park benches, but then I paid some appropriate money to buy those. And then those were purchased by the city. I think there was some that were picked out, and they just had become better ones for better price. It looks like it was just mentioned, you know, where.
So we're gonna look at the same thing as what we have.
The dog park?
No matches.
I don't remember.
You're kind of the lead.
Do you remember how many setups there are?
Let's remember, I, uh, I think there was three exercises, two benches.
Two benches, so. You wanna buy two benches, a match, a dog park?
If you were gonna do benches for the walking past, you might want to go a little bit. Cause for one of the dog park, we still need to put some concrete under them. The, cause they, they are not really anchored now, they're plastic. But if we have concrete under them, maybe they would be fine. Picture something.
Just similar to the, uh, Kizimbo's, just a plot. I don't know if anybody's ever mentioned this, or you guys in committee in steering. We've been riding Shunga quite frequently, you know, I understand that it would require upkeep on the wood. But they have benches that are in memory of the wood, they're, they're metal. And then they have the wood on it in their carve in in memory of so and so. Maybe give people an opportunity to buy a bench.
One of our, one of our packets we gave to you listed those little metal things to engrave to put on benches if someone wants to buy one. That wasn't one of those lighting packets?
Cause of memories, they weren't overly expensive. Yeah. Did you have?
The ones that we have are green, I guess.
You know, did you have?
I don't know what they cost, but you might check with like Kim Buckholz, um, Fire Department about benches, they have a couple of them right now here in front of the, uh, L building. They're plastic. I think they were built up better in the weather.
With that composite material?
And then I know they have one that says in memory of Bud Shelton, they have one that says in memory of Jack Ramsey.
A big good idea.
But they're, but they're kinda like Kevin said, when you have it engraved into them.
They're pretty solid.
And yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're pretty, I mean, I, they're, they're, I would probably pull it, you add an acreage or something, they'd walk off with them, but.
They're, they're.
They're real nice, solid, and I don't know what those run, but Kim Buckholz would probably be able to give you a direction to go on.
Oh, you want me to do that?
Yes, thank you.
Did he get, does luck into?
Yeah.
I mean, if he did come up with something better.
Okay.
I gotta watch.
We got enough, I mean, we got enough decent sized families in town, you know, and ownership of the city kinda deal. You know, try to get involved in that, boy.
Yeah.
I think, if I remember right, one of the, before the steering committee, Kelly brought up, maybe have any small favorable sponsor of some of that equipment, benches and stuff or something.
Okay.
I'd have to ask her if that was, thank you. So I know we've talked about it with other races, just.
Right, that's why I didn't wanna put all the work into find benches and all of that, if it was already something that was being done. We had to double up on benches.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, back to the meeting consensus, did you guys see anything in there, did you get that question for her? This is first I've seen, so I'll have to have time to go through and.
So on Wednesday night, the steering committee will meet, and we're gonna narrow it down a little bit. And then the park planning committee will come after that, and they'll narrow it down to three park designs. And then we'll bring those to you to cut out for the survey. And then you can go with what the survey says, or obviously you can take from the three either way. So.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anything else other than park?
Not if you guys didn't have any questions.
Did you see anything else on that, okay? Yes. Uh, Shayna?
We did everything. So. What we mean, the first thing we have listed is architect that too, which you mean. So I have been talking to the USDA about grants and loan programs, and I want to talk to a few other places about grants. Uh, and so what they directed us to do was to find a architect first of all, to get some grants, to get some surprises. Um, to have a, put the plan together, uh, so that we can move forward with, working on meeting those, those money. So I consulted, I sent emails out to several, and, um, I got response from couples. Uh, most of the time it was, you're, it's too small a project. So fortunately, we had BG show up, um, BG, we obviously worked with on several different installations. And so, um, we went ahead and looked over the building, and we put together a proposal, and you can explain, he can explain much better, um, what it is that, that you guys should be looking at. Tom just went over it today, um, so I will leave the floor for Ken to explain what we're, what plays for you right now.
Thank you. So my name is Lynn Edline, with BG Consultants, we have team members that are working on the park project, uh, and other parks with your community as well. So what I provided for you, and Tom Barnes is reviewing, his team is a proposal to prepare a, what we call a preliminary architectural report. Initially, it is a kind of a concept plan, um, with, and, you know, costs for the construction, the top cost for all the design that go with it. Kind of a magnitude of scope effort that funding agencies, whether they're loan or to grant, not require to be able to kind of support and understand where the facility improvements we're looking at in scenario. And so that is kind of the, the scope of work. There's an exhibit with the proposed scope agreement that includes, uh, build documentation of the existing facility, basically measuring the building what's there. Uh, it's a nice facility, it looks like it could very well meet the needs of your community. Uh, what we would do is work through that, specifically understand the needs of the department, lay that out, ensure that, or, uh, confirm that it aligns with accessibility and safety and security, operation of that nature. And then prepare a document that would show graphics of what, what they look like, floor plan, elevation, like that, so forth. With the, and the cost, we've prepared a report, so are deliverable, to be the names, and we can propose within a twelve week period would be to, kind of similarly similar, kind of the effort that was done for the park in the past, which is that preliminary architectural report that can be utilized moving forward. This is with, uh, GAS, uh, who worked with your community in the past as well, uh, suggesting that the process for this for USDA or for CDBG or other loan, uh, or grant applications, it's very similar, they really require the same information. They wanna know how, how the community really looked into the needs and options that your community has, and understand the opportunities in, in pathways moving forward. So that's what we've offered a proposal for, uh, for you to give for review, and then consider at this time, and report being able to work with you, and we can start on the process. And Lynn, hopefully after any questions you may have, uh, while I'm here.
Okay, so this is for the old Casey's, it's gonna be the street. Addresses mean nothing to me.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that, that is that facility currently right now, yes.
Okay, um, so the report is seventy-five hundred dollars, is that the report, or is that some of the work?
It's just all of the work in the, the report itself, so that's cumulative of the, uh, the, the cost of the time to do the fill documentation, to develop the documents for drawings, uh, to do the opinion of cost, and to do that report deliverable. So you'll receive several things, you'll receive essentially PDFs and art, uh, twenty-four by thirty-six boards that show the scope of the project graphically. You'll have eight and a half by eleven, uh, deliverable, then in PDF two, of the opinion of costs that go for various options and levels of completion for the project. And then you will receive a PDF eight and a half by eleven of a report. That report itself will specifically identify some things that are unnecessary for those grants and loan applications, inclusive of the, the existing conditions, the challenges with the existing facility, and your existing department operations right now. Will identify the opportunities that are provided through this venue, for example, the, uh, the old Casey's building, as it were. And the, uh, options for just understanding the, kind of the, the risk reward with that space, you know, what sort of utilities associated with it versus other, obviously there is. So it's gonna rate very well in, in that regard, so proximity to downtown core, things of that nature. Identifiable codes that are related to that project as well will be identified in the report also.
Okay, so it's just all of the paperwork that needs to be done before you can actually do any work on the building?
Yeah, so it's kind of that first phase, that first step, so this becomes that concept plan essentially. And then what would happen is, once you have funding in place, you report, it takes that advice and then starts working on the details for bidding to a contractor, so they can tell you what this base does not, uh, position the city to be able to bid the work yet at this time, if this is place that groundwork, to be able to pursue the funding for it.
This would get us to the point where we could go to USDA?
That is correct, yes.
And then from USDA, we go to CDBG?
Yes, well, that's correct, according to, uh, GAS, that's the process they're looking at USDA, and then CDBG potentially has the funding sources. That's kind of their expertise, is the funding sources phase for more of the design budget, but absolutely that is, that's the process, that's that first step. And with any design process, you go through, there's a planning phase where you have those concepts, you're dri, you're drafting them up, then you go to schematic design, which is also moving further. Design development, registration documents, and then that's where you're bidding to build projects. So this is just that first step, it's just we stop at that first step, and put a report with it, to identify the need for the project for the USDA and CDBG on the funding sources.
Is there any action, leaving on that selection?
Uh, my assumption would be that we live through, or along the group. Going forward with hiring hand, that's the, the person to do those, all that paperwork and all the justice.
Okay.
Our time to move forward so we can get to USDA.
So if we are going to apply for any grants, do you do that for us?
Uh, no, so we do not apply for the grants, but, uh, that's where you have a grant app, a rider, uh, for example, GAS, uh, Government Assistance Services, that's kind of their role. We position so that they can take that information and the, kind of partition that out to certain funding agencies.
Yeah, we are going to give them all the information they need.
Yes, yeah.
To write the grant.
That, that's correct, we get all that information in place, that gives you the information for them to go write the grant, and that same information that's used to write the grant also is used to begin the, the actual design for construction, if that makes sense. It's kind of like in the two part piece, which have that, that first starting point. So that's, that's what our role, we will not be submitting that for the application, but we will provide sealed documents that do have the architect's seal of the opinion of cost of the report. And that's what those agencies look at, that GAS is using, such as USDA, CDBG or others. They're utilizing that information, submit to them as kind of documentation for the need of a project. And then others with NGS, that's their expertise, is filling out the, the nuances of the, the application.
Okay, so we also do have the potential of, when we do get our grants, that they pay us back for this, for the seventy-five hundred of the.
Who pays?
The grant.
The grant. If you're not afforded the grant, of course you're.
Right.
We just have to pay GAS to write the grant for it as well.
We'll find some way to make that application for the grant.
You guys, what's going on, you see the motion?
Hi, Alan. Uh, I move that we approve BG um, to move forward on the, uh, preliminary, preliminary architecture design for, um, was it, through three twenty-two, three thirty-two main? I mean, the price, I don't know. It's gonna be, it should be seventy-five hundred. Not to a C.
It's a maximum, not some.
Not to, not, not to a C, seventy-five hundred dollars.
Alright, you got a motion? Do you want to have a second? Oh, second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. All those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, sir. Good hub. So the next thing is the.
So the next thing is the resolution. We've been watching, just kind of tried a while on this particular situation.
Any one else?
So we have, uh, we have a couple of vehicles that are inoperable and unregistered, being property as well as releasing the pack of the, in the yard or higher than fence. So we have, uh, the back doors open, I have to open those sometimes. Uh, work ethic is, because there's homes with a roof. I do know that he says that, uh, in water, the paint pipe exploded last winter, so he's unable to live there. And there's just various piles of household stuff.
So there's no by living there now?
No, there's nobody there now. Um, we have been in contact with him numerous times to take that situation, um, to know available, so, um, this has been set up for, uh, to the situation.
So the picture of the tag is trying to show us that it's.
It's expired.
Okay, cause you can't, it's just, it's just a dark thing. I can't see anything on it.
Is yellow?
It's red.
Red, red?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure exactly where the.
There, expired whoever.
That's probably nineteenth?
So if you go straight down through a street and just go up, it's about in the middle of the, of the street on the south side, is a blue house.
Okay. So what does this mean, authorize the abatement? I'm, I'm sorry. To clean up?
Clean up, yeah.
Okay, so.
So get rid of all the things that, that can harbor vermin and. Crater.
Okay, pictures to secure the property so that, you know, right now anybody can give it.
Yeah.
Improve the youngster's state.
Yes.
So this would allow cleanup, uh, locking the building, and then we would apply the cost of doing that to the property tax?
That's what it says.
The resolution does authorize in the, in the process that we're engaged in, that, authorize it.
Who does the cleanup? Maintenance?
We, we've abandoned four.
So they sign off their grant. For free.
I don't know the problem personally.
Do you guys still move forward on this? If you guys go a little forward, I just need a motion.
Motion that we adopt resolution number twenty, twenty-five dash six.
Second. Motion made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Can you give that to us?
Thank you.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Anything else, Karen?
Yes, sir. So, um, I spoke to you last time about, uh, weapons, uh, that we, we'll need, get a weapon for, uh, after, before you go to Academy, the last weapon that we have is, is, does not prove five Academy, doesn't have night, night sights that are functional on the field. So, um, these, this is from Charger Arms, oh, yeah, previously giving you something from GT distributors. Uh, yeah, this is from Linden. Uh, this is from Linden, uh, so this is for the, the whole thing, and this would be for five weapons. And then he would give us a trade-in for fifteen hundred dollars. What I want to ask for this evening, however, is just to get approval for one weapon, um, which is going to be, um, without a trade-in, it would be one thousand ninety-five, and that is toward a holster, the optic, the gun, and the night sight. He, he was approximately three hundred dollars per trade-in, so we'll be able to trade in, um, on this one, if we, when he's got this, not his work for us. Um, and so I would look, be looking at, um, about seven hundred and ninety-five dollars to get, um, in the weapon that he needs to go to Academy on the third, new. For one, it'd be, it'd be seven ninety-five.
Where are we at with the tall home?
So we are at like two hundred fifty for the tall home. We also have, uh, diversion money from the county, diversion money from our own port that, um, I was actually about today. I did speak to, uh, uh, Michael about the whole project, and he said that, um, we often can find the money for the whole project. So, but what I want to emphasize is just for one, so that we can make sure that we can, to, to get, get help together.
And he's going to Academy?
No, no.
And, and I'm sorry, which office is it?
Academy.
Block, block.
Do we get the weapon and everything done, uh, thirteen days?
Yes. All right, so I, I, my list, Charger Arms, because they gave it a little more in trade-in, and they are closer, so, um, they're, they're in the original one, so, but, keep it in the community, keep it on stage. The purple wave auction is going well for maintenance. I think they've got a thousand sixty-five on their truck. I think we're at maybe three hundred, um, but I anticipate, uh, toward the last, so it's the twenty-eighth is the last day for our auction. And normally toward the end, the last two days, they start to, to pick up and, um, hopefully we'll get it to the thousand, one of those two. Uh, but I've been watching it, it's just been, it's not very exciting.
Do you guys still on the, the one weapon with the accessories?
Um, I move that we, uh, proceed with the purchase of one weapon of each department from Charger Arms at the price of seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
After trade.
After trade.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
So I also, um, November first, fourth, and fifth, I am going to post Academy training school at Academy. Uh, so I'll be volunteering with the fourth, fourth, and fifth. Uh, it was not a cost, it was free class, so I'm just letting you guys know. I'll be for that, I've got six coverings and change, so we will be good to go, that'll be even more like training hours, three, four days every year. Also, I'm teaching class, and I don't know if you guys know this at all, but every year I teach a class at the bank, uh, about robbery prevention, um, and, and things to, to look for for our colors, for the people that work at the bank. And so I'll be presenting that class on the twenty-eighth, um, de-activated every year, and so we come up with a different personal every year and, and on, and taught about an hour class, and that helps them with their continued case situations. Uh, I also wanted to touch on code real quick, uh, just a couple numbers. Uh, we have done a hundred and two cases this year. Uh, out of those a hundred and two cases, we have approximately seven that are still pending. Uh, we, at the end of the day, for court, we had fifteen out of twenty-six cases were code, and then out of that, we still have seven pending, but, um, things are, are moving along with that, and we're having a good result.
Anything for Shannon?
Accreditation is going well. Uh, we're continuing to put out, uh, policies and procedures and, and, um, working our way through all of that. What is there, how many left? Uh, we are approximately fifty-two percent through, uh, policy generation. Right now, I'm in the thick of the weeds of use of force. Um, there is a lot of research that goes into these policies because obviously law compliance is huge when you enter into a use of force situation, so, um, definitely working our way through it. Um, we've started to improve on some of the policies that we do have finished. Uh, we are still on track as far as our timeline with CLEP, and overall, it's, it's going well. It's kind of chugging along with a little trade, slow, but it is good.
Does the codification that we're going to talk about later a little bit, does that help for incorporating into that?
Um, not.
All of our cities, so.
Not really.
Okay.
That'll be more day-to-day, the stuff that they use, but as far as the actual CLEP standards, uh, we don't use them a lot. We may reference them occasionally, so, um, I will check where those intersect, if we have anything, any references we need to change, but overall, it won't throw us off.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
On a desk. Is that what, is that what these pictures are?
Yeah.
When they're here, we carry in the back wall, they have, that's the sign, well, have some of the origin, and then right on the front of the building.
I think that looks like.
They recommend getting it fixed before it got worse, like the back wall.
Is that from water, groundwater, or water from roof and building going on it?
Just, I think, time.
The mortar is just wearing out?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, we've got, I think, you know, it's, it's working.
I mean, rain still hits, uh, pressure. Over a hundred years.
I know. This thing, though, if you got back gutters, you're going to have bad time to put it down, like, it doesn't help, so. Never told me any, any time. That is. That's this one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that for the wall here and also underneath the flower box?
Yeah, okay.
Is the east side fine? Are we done on the get sidewalk? Basically, brick goes all the way down this side, it has a stone and mortar, foundation to cover it. So they're going to take that stone and mortar and turn it all bright white, white?
Yeah.
Apply that white dry lock?
Yep.
After four minutes? So let's, uh, do the paint over it, full rock, you know? Or, I'm going to do paint brick houses, or you can break us up here.
You need to split it underneath that thing?
That's true. Maybe it lasts longer. I know when we had the foundation with the back, we talked about trying to get other bids, didn't really get enough.
Right.
So we wanted to try to do, yeah, find more bids, or do we, do we kind of curb this? We want to belong with this.
Don't you want to get it fixed where the weather starts getting really bad?
It probably would better to do with the ground, because it, I think it really gives you all the time.
And an amazing job, and you are very respectful and good work, man.
Are they just, they're just going down to ground level, or they go in sub-ground at all? Do they do any of that down, go down a little bit, or is it just to where the ground level is? I mean, it says three feet. Is that actually three feet from the ground to the first?
Looking at your pictures, I would imagine.
Yeah, which is, that's why I was, I was noticing that.
It's looking bad up here, but yeah, here's where it's, so I'd, they excavate this, kind of a change where the, where the, where you're working.
Yeah.
Maybe you can do this, different.
How so?
Uh, does that sound like building improvement on women? Great building improvement?
Yeah, maybe.
I'll make the motion that we have the foundation machinery specialist do the foundation work on the three hall building for two, uh, forty-five hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, all those opposed? Motion carried.
Do you need my signature to get on this? Do you know that you go on to the RDR? That's the one next to the distributor.
There's an awful lot of numbers.
Yeah. We'll simplify it. Turn away from the pretty colorful one.
Thank you.
And then go one more page, because we already know that big number.
Yeah.
And you'd be at a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars, the water line, extension, or twenty twenty-five. So Michael worked on this pretty hard, and he'd come up with all these numbers that's moving stuff around, and I am not going to pretend to understand how he figured that out. But he has found a hundred and fifteen, like I said, for the first year, and then the next page would be a twenty twenty-six, uh, two hundred and four thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars for the east side. So, projected face one, twenty twenty-five, would basically be short one thousand foot section that is on the west side, west hillside of the highway. The twenty twenty-six would be for seventeen hundred, twenty-one, eighty, west three side.
Now, I know last meeting we had this question, chat head question that the door is about, if we split it up, that it's going to jack the price. Doesn't look like it's really jacked it up.
Looked about ten dollars, eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
They guessed about a ten percent increase just for inflation, um.
So they're not, I mean, they're not really.
It could be two more.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. It could say the same.
We could ask them about doing, if they could do it like the last week of this year and first weekend next year.
Yeah, they weren't, no, they were grabbing the sound of it. And you can start up springtime, you know, for three, four months, year with ground fault, and you're not too much different price. You got six month difference that could change, or could not, but honestly, that's particular. I don't see a different route take. It's flipped it up nicely, and, and he would be budgeting on this front page for future projects, unless we, his numbers still need about a hundred thousand in reserve for a cushion, so it doesn't leave us zero.
Yeah.
With the, the way he's got his numbers, it leaves about a hundred thousand cushion. Then he would be putting twenty-seven or twenty-nine, add up to that, sixty thousand.
Is there any concern that we need to have as far as splitting the project into two, two legs, they're done four to six months apart? You know?
I mean, the sooner we can fix them, the better. And if, if we can fix them, that's the best we have.
I just don't know if it puts any kind of strain on the system, you know, I mean, I know. Big line, the small line, the big line, the small line.
No more than the emergency project, took this red two hundred foot section, we'll have to time it out before we have to pull the tower, before we start the project, obviously. And that still gives them a couple of days before we start the work. They, they should be doing quicker than that, but.
But before we shut the.
Except for maybe.
Yeah, until it's dug out and everything ready to go, right?
That's their plan, would be doing all the tree revving and then dig it, and then place mine, and we've basically just got to have that line killed. And then place mine, and we've basically just gotta have that line killed for time checking that code dance.
Which shouldn't take too day.
Which should not take two days.
So we don't get a disruption in service?
Sure is.
Okay. Our personal feel that it's something that needs to be done.
That's serious. It's went really quick. For the project in this size, in two years, that's pretty quick. So phase one, do they have a timeline? Do they have that from them? We do not, to my knowledge, have a timeline, but if I were to say in twenty twenty-five, when they could start, when they could finish.
Yeah.
They, from my experience, they're gonna wanna start pretty ASAP. This is why I know what I've been heard before it starts getting cold. They don't wanna work from that.
Yeah.
Understand it. I could get a. Now, how they surely. I mean, it, it's. I guess, I would think just for, just for information.
For information, for sure. So, so I want to let everyone know. Yeah, just curiosity question. Just because when we do stuff in the city, and we have trees that goes out to that, um, the tree grubbing, if that, we're not gonna host all those trees that they can dig, right? We will, that's it.
It says the total of trees at city dump site.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, it does?
And I'm sure I would have to, because we have the face of world.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So that'll be burning pretty good. Okay.
That could be up by the bleacher. Go up the bleacher.
Is, is it gonna be an issue?
Yeah, that's kind of.
Yeah, put a hit, put a, put a, when it's safe, and when it comes down to a living.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I haven't been out there, huh? I feel like it does its numbers, and there's something that he's done, so. Someone feels comfortable making a motion.
I make a motion for the water line, water line replacement project for RDR excavating for one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I think.
About five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
And it'll be under the water, right?
The water user.
Motion made in sight. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah, let's get with them and see how soon they can be started and what we get to do in our end, be ready for that.
Yep.
We can do the extensive flushing.
Anything better with that?
Oh, yes. I believe we've taken out some water on seven bedroom areas. Especially the south side of town, there's three, four inch mains that are surrounded by six and eight inch mains. So anytime we've been flushing, we're not necessarily getting those cleaned. And I'm confident that we got those cleaned from now. So we are doing sections of town pretty heavily, and we're making it go down the different pathways, or shutting down those rounds. It is to earn stuff up. It's gonna have to be whatever you're trying to, I guess, to keep things clean. The plan is to, once we have all of these cleaned, and seven minute bids, no doubt go to the different breaks and miss ten, twenty years leaky on the highway. Once we get all those little hiding spots cleared, then we can just move to a more maintenance way to do this street this week, this line this, that week. It's always so. Currently, we are moving a lot of different spots that haven't been touched by a turkey before, so. We're making progress.
Are we, I know we put one notice, I saw one notice, so we put, every time you go to a different area, the dude goes, are we putting a notice out for that area?
There's been a couple of different.
We've already updated.
Okay.
I know it keeps pulling up one, whenever I be on that.
Today was only planned to be first street area to use first, because we had already done that old town for the highway excavator group. But it stirred up around the school, so I had to kind of go up third street also and check the cloud out. Because when I'm wondering how to flush the line, it also flushes those places. So, it's good that it's finding stuff and getting it out there, but it's not always good for getting all that money.
Does that account?
Oh.
Air in the line?
Air in the line is definitely.
Okay.
You will have air.
I, I did, and I, I thought, oh, what did I do? And then I thought, oh, they're flushing.
I believe Kansas and Davis, which is the highest one for quite a while, got a lot of air out, and it looks clear, but.
That was no problem, mind you, it scared me. Um, did, read or anything out of bed about the?
I believe it's eight.
Okay.
Um, Chad has, uh, a question about a sign out there by the bank. Uh, we've updated a lot of other signs that not much says. I think he wanted to see if this is something that he might be able to.
You council approved to get another sign. This is the only sign, I believe, in town that did not get updated when we did all the other seat park signs. And it just, simply can't think of something like that. But a little better reading. We might have a sign, spare sign, I don't know if it's forwarded yet, because I know there's one extra sign from the Black Coast.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I don't know what the sign says. I think I just forgot, and I'm not one to feel a trouble. And then we used all the posts, and we had one left. There's one left. Okay, that was my next question, was whether or not we had it, and if we were to approve, we would. That on.
Let's tilt you up. Uh, if we need, if we need something new, or something by name, um, straighten it up. Something we can get.
We got a quote.
Okay. Sounds like we might have lost some materials. Awesome. Uh, did we have anything to first?
I have a request, and I don't know if there's any more around town. Um, Cox, when they're doing their lines, I think it's sidewalk. There's two, three gigantic, I can't move, pieces of concrete on the alley. And I don't know if there's any more on any other alleys from when they're digging. If you guys are out and about, can you move it out? I, I mean.
No, they have, they have.
Do they?
I didn't notice it.
Okay, I, I mean, if you happen to go by there.
What alley?
Third Market, right behind our house. I mean, they're, I kind of drive over to and almost hit that fire hydrant to get around them here. But there's three big chunks.
Yeah, but.
Okay.
Probably a little more.
Okay, I didn't know if there's any more, and if you talked to them about that.
Anything else for Dustin or Nina? I think it doesn't.
No.
Um, just.
I showed the bread on time. Ah, thank you, thank you. Better late than never, they say. Um, I'm back. Uh, I've been doing this, uh, thing with the seniors now for five, seven years, something like that. And so, we try to go to each of the towns and then kind of take a tour and, uh, of the city, like parks typically. Um, and just look for opportunities to, uh, provide a little glow up, um, I guess, if you will. Um, and so, for Carbondale, uh, we focused on the, the two parks, the one right across the bridge, or excuse me, the railroad tracks, and then, uh, the Ball Field complex. Um, the projects that they, uh, came up with and would like to undertake with your approval. I've also been in contact with, um, some of the other entities like, uh, Brad and Tasha and, um, Carbondale Parks and Rec. Um, and then, so let me just say the, the projects. The gazebo, um, we touched, they put, uh, a thing of primer and paint, but, and a few unique pictures, I, I have them. But, uh, they would like to, uh, add another coat to that, just to make it white. Um, the paint, because it was exposed wood, just kind of swirled it all up. Um, then, I don't know if you've seen, I have the video here. Um, the, um, the restroom area with just, there's some graffiti on the do, on the metal door, um, to just repaint that red and just kind of get rid of that graffiti. And then there's some of like the, okay. Get it.
And this is the new bathroom?
Uh, the one right across from.
But in the old part.
Yeah. Um, so.
Current.
Yeah, and it's, it just, um, you know, and, and we're not, we don't wanna step on anyone's toes, so if you guys are already in the process of that, great. But, uh, we would just put another coat on and.
We would love to let them do it.
Okay.
Take the door off for you?
Um, and like, I mean, just, just some of the, like, the, the, that part. Um, the only issue, and, and so we're gonna go back, uh, next week, and I'll kind of talk with them about, like, what we would like to do. Um, but the other side here, I think, might be an issue with the, uh, the boxes and stuff. So, we'll try to do our best to just keep the paint off of the boxes. And do that. Um, then at the ball fields, uh, the roofs of this, so, uh, Green Team, which is another organization that we have a trail. Um, we painted the underneath side of that with the blue metal painting. I'll show you what it looks like underneath. And that looks nice. Um, but the top, we would just like to put a new coat on, just because it's like such faded and stuff. Um, I have a couple of students who are willing to bring their paint sprayers. Uh, when we did it the last time, we did the red, and it's just the corrugated tin makes it difficult.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to get it.
Yeah.
And stuff. Um, and then, uh, they had mentioned the, the post, but we talked to Brad, he said those are coming up. So, uh, they were wanting to do something with that, but we won't need to. Um, and then, the other part, um, that'll be a next year update. Uh, but that little bleacher there, we're gonna have quite a few kids in Carbondale, and so, um, Tasha said that in the summer, they do use that bleacher, and that's just exposed wood. So, we'll just throw a little thing of paint on, if that's okay, and get that looking better. And then, of course, uh, the city, I think you replaced the wood on the, on some of the bleachers. Uh, last year, but some of the rotted wood was taken off, and so, uh, Green Team like reprimanded everything. And then, we'll just put the, we'll have the red on the one field. If that works.
I think you're gonna do that?
The only concern I have is with the bathroom, it's a small part. Because Mercury stated, did they get the fiber going underneath the rover?
Yeah.
Okay. Because the box he's talking about is Mercury's, and they were supposed to move that to the, a hole or something? They only put it on the bathroom temporarily. And if you paint, and then they move it, then we're gonna have a.
Which might need a tough off after that.
Yeah.
Should we, uh, do you want us to do like the three sides and just leave that whole side open? Like, so you.
There, there's a gap behind, uh, the leaves, so it's just a.
Is it?
I believe we did.
I have the video.
Plastic.
Oh, okay.
We can use plastic and off the deep bits, they can, they can just.
Okay, I, I didn't know if they actually attached it to the building. I just know that they said that was only temporarily.
It's like spraying. They put up. I think we can wrap it in plastic.
Sounds like he knows the consensus, so.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, uh, I appreciate your support. Um, I just know when we go on these little outings, uh, you know, the, the seniors have, you know, they're, they're kind of ending the time at the school, and, and they just wanna get back and, and make any huge impact when you have forty or fifty kids in, in these towns just going out for five hours.
Mm-hmm.
It's crazy to see what kind of, uh, impact they can.
It wasn't.
So, I really appreciate it, and I'm gonna come late and leave early, so.
Okay.
Appreciate you guys.
You were right on your point on the list you're saying.
Was that the, the server recorder here?
Yeah, for the, um, we can put the cops and maybe I'll provide some.
Okay.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, so we, we discussed this last time, and we were just waiting to see if cops would.
Correct. I, I do have one question. I have lots of questions. Uh, when Mike, I signed with Michael, Michael said one of the phones is the dummy phone, so only be forwarded to whoever's on duty in the police department. Or something to that effect.
Um, I imagine you're talking about most of the hallway out there.
And he said who's gonna go with the P B.
I have one of these, they're gonna, they're gonna cover the new police station as well, and sell, and one of them will go in the hallway out here. So if someone comes in and the doors lock, they can pick up that phone, and it'll dial whoever's on duty.
Oh.
Okay, but if there's nobody on duty.
Then it'll go to dispatch.
Alright, it'll go to dispatch. And you talked to chief about that.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Alright.
And this was the phones?
Yeah.
The phone, all the equipment?
They provided, I think the installation was free, and we're just saying that the phone here.
The phone, okay.
Yeah.
So the, the phone in the hall would be for emergency purposes, or?
If anyone needs an officer.
If they come in and.
Instead of going in the. Just wanna come in and do their, use the ATV tag, or go pick up that phone, since nobody's in the office. And then it's gonna go to dispatch?
Yeah.
Dispatch is okay with that?
Well, it's the same way if you call the police station, now we're gonna.
Well, not, not ATV going to dispatch, they wouldn't.
Normally, it's not really happening.
You call the. Later. Go, let the police. Call go dispatch.
It's right, that's not a thing. I mean.
I guess that's one of them.
If it's during hours, they would have somebody coming to do that, it, it would get picked up. Because people can't get an ATV tag after five o'clock. In the city hall as well, so. Cause that's paid the same one.
It's two fourteen a month.
I just don't want a bunch of people coming in, you're not here.
Yeah.
It is nuisance call story.
Oh, which right now, if we.
Disrupting, they're, their jobs.
It was just to keep criminals, but that was.
Or.
We forwarded our phones for quite a while, yeah. So it'd be no different.
Well, I, I guess that was the next thing, can that be forwarded to like an on-call police phone?
That was the first thing, and if no one's available, then it goes to dispatch.
But if you're on a call, if you're on a call and it dials.
If there was nobody on duty, then it would rather go into dispatch, you would do what you like.
Yeah.
Shannon's phone, and she would answer and say it's after hours, or it's whatever.
But right now, when you're, when you guys are not on duty, and you go into the phone sys, whatever system Quickcom has, you forward the phone, this has the same ability.
This phone would be in the hallway?
Yeah, right up.
So they won't have any access to it after hours anyway? Because the door is locked.
So it's two fourteen.
Paint outside on the side of the building.
What's it saying now?
So right now, we're paying ninety-six dollars through Quickcom, but the reason we're only paying ninety-six is because we've waived the tower fee of nine hundred and forty dollars. So really, for Quickcom, we're paying about one thousand thirty-six dollars right now.
So if we.
And then we have to come up.
If we go with Mercury, Quickcom will have to start.
Paying a tower.
Paying a tower fee, okay. Okay.
But by going to Mercury, are you also talking about, okay, this all plus, this is internet. Five hundred megabytes down, five hundred bytes, um.
Anything has to be better than what we have now.
Well, I do have a concern with five hundred bytes up for, if the police department's gonna be uploading stuff. If they upload a video of five hundred bytes, I mean, that's what it says. That's gonna be. That's going to be a little low.
I don't know, I can help with numbers, but this is what we have now.
Well, you got twelve megabytes, sixty down and twelve up, so you're going to be better going down, but you're, you're much faster going up here than you will be here, because this literally says byte. B is byte, which is the lowest.
We can check on it.
It could be, if it's a typo, then okay, I would hope it says. Okay, so.
I've had Mercury home for the last two years, I have kind of zero issues with it.
You want to take a look until we get?
I would.
Bring it up next meeting?
All right.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's true, then.
Figure out whether the typo or not is.
Can we approve it as a typo, and then if it's not a typo, then we don't move forward and bring it back, that's a good idea.
I mean, yeah, we can, we can approve it, but, uh, pending.
Confirmation.
Or confirmation. The, I moved up, we approved the Mercury broadband service order for two hundred and fourteen dollars for the phones, city hall, phones and internet, pending confirmation on the, uh, upload speed.
Upload and download.
And download.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Um, the Herald?
Yeah, there's three, yeah, there are one for Veterans Day, one for Christmas greetings, and then the New Year's, um, Happy New Year's Day, you can start him on there.
Why is Christmas so simple? Oh.
Because it's Christmas.
Because it's big, okay.
And we did these things three, yeah, the last, uh, three years.
I make a motion that we approve. Three holiday ads to run in Ophich County Herald with a rate of one hundred and twenty dollars.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Word net? Five forty-nine.
Well, we've talked about the codification a lot, um, but we didn't actually have an ordinance, and he's like, it's a vacant issue.
Do we need the codification before we receive the stuff from the company in which bill?
You're published it online.
Yeah.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is kind of like, uh, cart before the horse, right? Yeah, okay, so we just need to prove it, make a motion that we approve ordinance number five of forty-nine.
Motion made in second. Motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried.
Broadcasting meetings follow up, so I know that this has been brought up many times in the past, but I have had more people come up to me looking for live streaming and/or a recording of the council meeting. So, I think that this is something, I mean, we need to at least make a motion on, and have a formal, uh, discussion on, because a, uh, motion has not been made in the past on this. So, I move to allow live streaming of the City of Carbondale Council Meeting, starting no later than the third day of November twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So we got, uh, three, four, and one here, so motion, uh, carried. Any off agenda items or follow up? I do, uh, dealing with bills. We, more than once, we've had bills that, when did we stop seeing the checks in the bills? And where are they now, have they already been sent out?
Yeah.
Because we've had, we've had times that we have paid things and said, why did we pay that much, or why did we do that, and never really got an answer about it, because they already sent the check out or whatever, and what? Do we get bills with the checks with pretty vague descriptions, both on the invoice, as well as settlement sheet, the check sheet? So, we're getting that, and, you know, like the one bill that you went and found that it was for the mower, it didn't say that at first, and we've got a lot of those. But, yeah, we're sending, we're just writing checks and sending it out and saying, yeah, we're okay with it and finding it, I don't necessarily like that. I, I, you know, and it could just be me. I think we need to make sure we have better descriptions on there than just, you know, can work, or can, uh, whatever business it is, and counter sale, that is not a description of what we're buying for five hundred and forty dollars.
Or detailed receipt.
Yeah.
Or practice flyers.
So are you talking maybe about like this? Somebody put it in your sideways?
Uh, that one I have a question on. Yes, and we're paying that, but my understanding, and it says covert for customers, customers are supposed to pay for the coves.
We still buy.
We buy, they pay it, we put it on their utility zone, they pay.
We still have to pay, pay them.
We, we buy the covert at cost and sell it to them at cost?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that, I thought they had to pay for it. Did you see it?
Well, did I sign it?
No, I don't think I signed it, I wanted to look at it.
You, you signed it.
Oh, not Chad.
Yeah, I think we've asked in the past, like on the Vanderbilt.
Yeah.
And they said, yes, they can do a detailed, they can receive, it's just when they go in and they purchase whatever they need to ask for that.
Rather than the.
Typically, the way the receipt is done. Yeah, they, Vanderbilt Department gives, gives an item number, it doesn't give what that item is, so we have no clue.
I'll have Michael watch for him and get more detail on him.
I have a quick call up from a while ago, uh, Don Bailey, who has been doing all of our camera equipment, um, has had family issues in Lea, that's what's happened over the years, uh, but he's supposed to be here this week, and by next week, he's supposed to have three more, uh, cameras and a DVR established in the park. For the stuff that you guys have already approved, like, two years ago.
Thank Shannon for that.
Yeah, yeah.
DVR in the park, or connected to our.
Right, so it's going to all be connected, but it's going to be like a hub, so it'll show all three of those, those, and it'll, um, we're going to go over it tomorrow, um, so if anybody, um, councilites wants to kind of talk to Don, I'm not sure exactly what time tomorrow can be here, uh, but, uh, it's the same plan that we presented to you guys and that you approved a couple of years ago, uh, he's just finally getting to it, he's lost his.
We already bought the cameras, though, right?
Yeah.
They're paid for.
Yeah.
And we were wondering if you wanted to purchase more, like, the new stuff going in, though, so. At the park. Because it's not going to cover all the new equipment.
We did the, the cameras at the new facility, right, at the North Park? We didn't.
There are both, there are both, there's going to be three, uh, there's going to be two, I can't remember if there's two with the, at the old one, or the new one, and one's the old one, or, but they're three sixties, and, and they cover like a large amount of space, and then, um, but I'll have more of that information, he's bringing the schematic back to me, and, um, we'll go over that tomorrow when he shares up.
I would say those, just go with those, and then, once we get the stuff in place, then we can figure out where we need to get other.
So, yeah, just the stuff. But I was just wanting to let you know we were going to.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, the, before me, in here, what, what does that spell, like, I don't know what. Sorry, it was back from.
No, we never put cameras, we. Go ahead, sorry.
We were experiencing a lot of vaguism, so when we were doing the cameras here, like, on the outside of the building, we wanted to add some support to the monitor.
And it was far enough back, it was actually off of COVID, man.
The guy that did the cameras, he started the library, and then, uh, we got him here, we got them put out at the Ball Field, at the, in the pool, um, the fire department has, is on the same system, and, uh, then the park will be on the same system, so we can access all of those systems, they, they wide, through our, our.
Don does a lot of camera, he does, he does a lot of the cities, but he has old and wanted to get that.
Yeah, I figured if.
Was there anything else, uh, off agenda or follow up? Uh, let's move on to, uh, extension requests.
I make a motion that we approve all four of the extension requests for October.
I do have one that I need to add.
Oh.
From our thirty-nine alerts, they're going to stay on eleven seven twenty-five for short.
Short? Okay. So, uh, Cheryl, would you mind, uh, start a little bit on your motion?
I would, I would say, I make a motion that we approve all five extension requests for the month of October.
Thank you. Motion made in second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried, uh, anything to note, or F Y on age?
Uh, just water testing. Water testing, pictures of how they.
After it was completed?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
While solo, it's the.
Next.
Or hand, the basement is no longer creepy.
You can use the floor on the house now?
No.
I mean, you can still fall downstairs.
Wow.
Yeah, but it has a light.
Nice. Nice.
Make a motion, we look at bills? Second. Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried, uh, meeting through that.